Good evening and welcome to our 2000, what is this, 2023 bond hearing tonight for the Amherst School Board. We are actually going to start off tonight with a posted non-public meeting to discuss some personnel matters in the school. And at six o'clock tonight, we will start the bond hearing. So our session will begin at 5:30 as it has now. And then we will take a break for the non-public and then we will come back, vote on anything that comes out of the non-public. And then we will begin the bond hearing tonight at six o'clock sharply. So for the time being, I will take a motion from one of the board members to enter non-public, knowing that Terri Beam will join us midway through the non-public. As she is traveling here due to an emergency that happened earlier in the day, she cannot be here on time. So I will take that motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion from Victoria.
I will second.
Josh will second. Roll call vote for all those in attendance.
Parisi, yes?
Goetheer, yes?
Conklin, yes.
White, yes.
Okay, we are in non-public at 5:32 after beginning tonight at 5:31. We will come back in approximately 15 to 20 minutes with the resumption of our meeting.
I will make that motion.
I have a motion from Josh.
I will second.
Victoria, second. We do not need to do a roll call vote because all five of us are in attendance tonight. So a simple show of hands in support to ratify the AEA contracts. That is one, two, three, four, five, four, and none opposed. So now we can say thank you to the AEA for their partnership in that agreement. And again, a press release coming later on this week with full details of the agreement. I will now take a motion to approve and to ratify the agreement that we have for a three-year contract with the ASSA, the Amherst Support Staff.
I will make that motion as well.
I have a motion from Josh.
And I will second as well.
I have a second from Victoria. Any further discussion? Seeing none, I will call a vote on the ASSA ratification. One, two, three, four, five, and none opposed. So again, thank you to the ASSA. Full details coming on that agreement, a three-year contract with the ASSA to take place of, take the place of the expiring five-year contract that will run out on June 30th of 2023. Last item we have from our non-public session is retirements. I will take a motion to accept the retirements as presented by interim superintendent Steve Chamberlain tonight. Josh?
Sure, I will make that motion as well.
I'll take a second from Victoria. Victoria?
I will second.
Perfect. Makes it easier for Danae. All right, seeing any further discussion on the retirements, seeing none, I will call a vote. All in favor? That is five and none opposed. We have accepted the retirements as presented. So thank you to the administration for arranging that information and getting us all the details that we needed to accept those retirements here tonight. So with that, we will take, I guess, a five-minute recess before we begin the bond hearing presentation of our meeting tonight. This will discuss the, now a four-minute recess, discuss the Amherst Clark Wilkins Elementary School project that will go on the warrant this year on voting day. So for now, we will take a four-minute recess and we will resume at 6:00 PM. Good evening, everybody. In attendance here tonight at the theater at South Heagan High School. And to those listening online tonight as we host the first of many meetings, you'll get to see us over the next five to six weeks. This is our bond public hearing tonight, January 9th of 2023, for the project at Clark Wilkins that will replace Clark Wilkins with a new elementary school. We will go over the details of that tonight. We'll talk about the rationale and the thinking behind it, which I know is a bit repetitive for folks over the last couple of years. This is a project that we talked about in great depth for what is really going on five years now. We'll go over the details, talk about the new approach that we have with a one-school approach as opposed to an entire district remodeling renovation that we had last year. We'll talk about the different ways to fund this and to pay for this. And then at the end of the night, we'll take questions tonight in person and virtually. So if you are in attendance tonight, we'll remind you again later on, but we will take comments from our online guests tonight. You'll have three minutes to speak and to ask your question. In order to speak, you need to raise the virtual hand, enter your full name and your avatar or your profile. When speaking, we ask that you turn your camera on and then say your full name and town of residence. And then you'll have three minutes to ask your question or to make your case. And then we'll do our best to answer those questions with as much fidelity and information as we have possible. So for now, I will turn it over to our vice chair of the Amherst School Board, Victoria Parisi, who will take us through the presentation tonight. And then we will open it up for questions when Victoria is done.
Thank you, Tom. Can everybody hear me with this? Well enough? So we're just taking a second so that we have this clicker sync up. A little technical difficulty, but that's okay. Okay, great. So welcome again to the public bond hearing for a warrant article 12. A new building becomes a tailwind in our improvement journey rather than a headwind. Article 12 will be on the March 14th ballot. The total bond amount will be fifty-four thousand, fifty-four million, two hundred and fifty thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars. As Tom said, this is the construction of a new elementary school at the Wilkins site and does not include the middle school. You're gonna follow me. Sounds great. Sounds great. This warrant article is the end result of a multi-year effort led by the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee. That committee was charged by SAU 39 Board and includes volunteers, board members, and administration. The board made the decision to put the elementary project on this year's ballot. This is the timeline for this multi-year process. Since 2017, the Amherst School District has really focused on planning for our facilities' needs. Beginning with an external capital needs assessment that analyzed the 20-year cost to operate our schools, the SAU Board then formed JFAC, the Joint Facilities Advisory Committee, to review the report and the status of facilities with an eye to the future. In 2020, once voters approved the cost for investigating options for long-term solutions through voting for the budget, La Valley Brenzinger Architects were hired to develop facility options. During that year, a variety of options and ways to address the aging facilities and space constraints were discussed. Eventually, after analyzing all of the options, JFAC brought a recommendation to build a new elementary school to the board and to renovate the middle school. This is what was on last year's ballot. This year, after a close to a year of further review and revision of cost estimates, the board has decided to only bring forth a warrant article to build a new elementary school. The bond warrant article is important for the Amherst School District journey. Tonight, we will present you with a lot of information and hopefully answer many of your questions. The school buildings are older. They are at end of life for many systems with some systems failing. They're also not energy efficient. They are costly to maintain, and we want to utilize the existing land and buildings in the most effective manner possible. Security is important as well as having a technology-rich and adequate classroom spaces. These are the facility project goals that have been stated over a number of years. Currently, the life safety systems at the elementary school are at end of life. These systems are due for replacement and have been noted in the external report known as the Capital Needs Assessment. HVAC systems are at the top of this list. They're not stable and they're not efficient. With the use of portable classrooms, controlled access is also not possible. The building simply does not have the space for staff to deliver the best practices and strategies for educating the students of Amherst. The Amherst School District is driven by research and evidence-based instructional practices. A new building would be a tailwind in our improvement journey rather than a headwind. You might hear us repeat this several times throughout the next couple of months because it really has explained the reasoning behind our school building initiatives. Currently, there are several impacts to student learning. We have limited teacher collaboration spaces. Art and music are very close to being moved to mobile carts, which would provide a much different programming to students. The intervention space is high noise and high distraction with multiple interventionists and groups sharing the space throughout the day. To support literacy acquisition, the library also needs updating. And finally, one building would create efficiencies and opportunities for administrators to increase their instructional practices. Throughout this process, we have been asked how the district will measure the impact of a new building. What we are going to do is look for the following four things. Reduced staff and student absences demonstrating the impact of an effective HVAC system. Improved standardized test scores, increased employment applications, and the possibility of an increase in new students. The Amherst School Board seeks to make strategic investments in the facilities of the Amherst School District. The expected life of Wilkins and AMS buildings is 50 years, with Wilkins being 55 and Amherst approaching 50 years old. In Amherst, short-term solutions have been favored by the voters. Over the last 30 years, this includes portable trailers and small additions. Larger initiatives such as building an upper elementary school to alleviate crowding have narrowly failed. And this brings us to the situation where we are today. Our current systems will require significant funding to replace them within the next 15 years. Amherst School Board has dedicated, has been dedicated to funding maintenance identified in the 2017 Capital Needs Assessment through the existing capital reserve fund. Once a new elementary school is built, the district will receive a maintenance program from the construction management firm. This will ensure proper maintenance, maintain consistency despite inevitable board and administration turnover, and allow future leaders to plan and budget for capital improvements of our facilities. Here are some pictures of the Clark School. The picture in the center of the slide shows where kindergarten students receive their lunches in the hallway. There's no kitchen at Clark, so meals are made at Wilkins and driven over to Clark in the private car of a staff member. You'll also notice that there are carts being stored in this hallway as well as book storage on the bench near the brick wall. Continuing with the theme of an area doing double duty, the multipurpose room is serving as a lunchroom and the location for all specials, including art, music, library, and physical education. The other spaces in the building have been utilized for classroom space and interventionists. While we're speaking about Clark, I think it's important to note that the portion of the building where the NPR is located was partially funded through private donations when it became clear that a multipurpose room was needed at the Clark site. Without this space, all of these specials and lunch would have to take place in individual kindergarten classrooms. These pictures are from Wilkins. In the middle, you see a technology teacher pushing a cart through the hallway. Because of the press on classroom space, the buildings are no longer having a technology or a computer lab. Instead, this teacher travels to classrooms with devices on a cart. And it's been estimated that a large portion of her day is inefficiently used by moving classroom to classroom. Again, physical space is a large concern in all of these pictures. The picture on the left shows intervention space. This is where we talk about high distraction and high noise. Last year's conference room has been reassigned for student space. So the picture on the right shows the only conference table in the building. This is located in area behind the stage, which is also needed for student lunch space. The stage, not this conference room. In this picture, you'll also notice that the room holds many pieces of curriculum. There was space available several years ago for a book storage room, and that is no longer an option. We're going to our current project goals. One of our goals is to maintain the 2020 facility project goals. Those were the ones that I listed before. The second is to minimize the cost impact to taxpayers. And the third is to address the Amherst Middle School in a different way rather than a total renovation. These three goals were realized after the 22, 2022 bond vote failed. And the administration, JFAC, and board members have been discussing all of these questions with community members and receiving feedback and deciding what our future progress would look like. The proposed project will create a one-building elementary school. It will house preschool through fifth grade. And then the Amherst Middle School will house sixth, seventh, and eighth. This configuration is developmentally appropriate and allows for AMS to have appropriate student space without requiring an addition, which would be an added expense that the board and JFAC do not wish to present to the community. This configuration was determined to be the most appropriate from a financial standpoint as well as supporting students. The reconfiguration will continue to provide adequate space to conduct special services while offering privacy and dignity for every student. It will continue to offer music, art, and PE to kindergarten students. It will increase the capacity of the cafeteria and the gym at the elementary school, and it will eliminate the need and expense of portable classrooms. This leaves many people wondering about the future of Clark. JFAC identified this question early on in the process and developed a committee to engage with the community in 2021. The idea was to generate ideas for what the future building could be, discuss potential outcomes and concerns, and be sure to include the residents of Amherst in the future plan for the site. With that being said, Clark School will remain a school with classroom space during the construction phase. In the long term, a number of possibilities exist from a town-owned property to park space to a sale. All will, all will require additional input from the community and various boards. We're going to move on to the conceptual designs, which are the work of Banwell Architects, a New England architectural firm with offices in New Hampshire and Vermont. They also have a proven track record of success with school facility projects. The elementary building will include a renovation of the multipurpose room. It will include a new kitchen, asbestos abatement, replacement of flooring doors and windows, technology upgrades, and security upgrades. It will also include a new addition making up for the bulk of the building. Significant effort has been put into the programming to ensure that the size of this building is adequate for current and future enrollments. This means that administrators at the buildings have discussed what is needed. This project programming has been simplified to include the meat and potatoes of what is needed. Not everyone gets what they wish for, and everyone makes compromises. Additionally, site work, the site for the school will have additional work. So this is the entrance approach. And you'll notice on the left-hand side of the picture, that's the current multipurpose room. We've worked hard with the architects to develop a building that has the traditional feel of Amherst. Again, this is a conceptual design. Its design is an evolving effort and will continue to be refined. It's an aerial viewpoint. There are several outside play areas for different age groups. Playgrounds will be located on the south side of the building with nearby classroom hallway entrances. The Grove area where over the log is played will be able to remain. And additionally, there will be space in the backfield for an additional outdoor classroom space. The side of the building also shows the parent drop-off loop if you're able to see kind of around the playground area. This is the view from Upper Wilkins. You'll notice the bus loop and the car loop that are designed to bring traffic off of Boston Post Road. Again, this is conceptual. It shows a courtyard providing daylight to classrooms. And this is the elementary school site plan. The site plan was developed with civil engineering firm of Ty &amp; Bond, who have completed a number of successful school projects. This is the initial site plan. We want to make sure that we have multiple play areas for multiple grades, and that's a priority of administration and the board to have these included in our design. The access road to Jones Road will be for emergency use during the school day. And the plan currently is to alleviate the Boston Post Road traffic at certain times of the day. The board has been in touch with town committees who plan to review the traffic to the area in the next several years. And the 2022 report cites favorably for the combination of the two school buildings. There's increased parking for school events. And additionally, with our community forums, we have been in touch with neighbors in the area. This is the conceptual design for the first floor. To help orient everyone, the yellow picture to the top left is the multipurpose room, the current multipurpose room. After-hours recreation opportunities will open up as the current multipurpose room provides a mini gym after school hours with the addition of a full-size gym. You'll notice that the youngest students are on the first floor. The spaces at the front will be accessible and the back of the building will be secure. And the enclosed courtyard, which provides an enclosed, secure outdoor spaces at the center. The courtyard is also there to allow for eight classrooms on both floors to have natural light and airflow, which has a positive impact on learning. The second floor contains more classrooms. There are several staircases, and we also have special services located on both floors close to the classrooms. And you'll also note that there's additional light from the courtyard into the classrooms and into the hallways. Wrapping up our conceptual designs, we're going to move on to costs. When the Amherst School Board first brought the project to the 2021 bond hearing, there were very rough estimates from La Valley Brenzinger for $98 million for both buildings. That price tag was too high. La Valley knew it, and the Amherst School Board knew it. But it was the best estimate at the time for the proposed design submitted to La Valley Brenzinger by the time of bond hearing. With feedback from the community, further assessing the programming, and going back to the drawing board, Banwell Architects was able to present us with a two-story elementary school building at a lower cost. That was the cost presented in the 2022 warrant article as $52.2 million. While further confirming the programming needs and analyzing costs, including construction escalation, the 2023 warrant article is $54,250,179. This is a guaranteed maximum price as a standard in working with a construction manager. As has been presented tonight, since 2017, there has been an eye to the facility needs of the district. The problems are not going away. We have systems that continue to work past their anticipated life. We have enrollment projections that remain steady with a gradual increase over the years. We have construction escalation and rising interest rates as the primary cost drivers. Using a conservative 4% per year for construction escalation, this slide contains some estimates for what the cost may be if this project were not to occur now. And as predicted, municipal bond rates have risen and are projected to continue to rise. So this slide has a few words on it, and I'm going to read several of them out loud here for us. The application for the New Hampshire Department of Education's school building aid was deemed a priority by the Amherst School Board and administration. The Amherst School Board is advocating for increase in building aid with local legislative representatives. Building projects were ranked on various criteria, including safety and security, obsolete or inefficient conditions, overcrowding and increased enrollment, operational cost efficiency, maintenance program, and the district's eligibility for free and reduced lunch. The New Hampshire DOE received the largest amount of applications since the moratorium was lifted in 2020. Amherst Elementary School Project was ranked number seven out of 17. The ranking from an outside source demonstrates significant need. The final awards will be based on ranking, state appropriation, and voter approval. Funding is possible, but not highly likely. The SAU administration has engaged with the New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank about financing. The advantages to working with this group are that it pools together smaller bonds to reduce cost, increase efficiency, and has a proven track record of supporting New Hampshire school districts. The current proposal is level debt with a current interest rate of 6%. There is a bond sale on Tuesday, January 10th, which is tomorrow, that could have new estimates from the bond bank. Based upon these estimates, we may consider a shorter term of 25 years to favor the taxpayer. It's good to know how building aid impacts our bond process. The New Hampshire Municipal Bond Bank application requires submission date before the state budget by annual finalization. Once the article passes, if the article passes, we can obtain a bond anticipation note to start the project before we know about building. When we say start the project, this would include design work and site work. These shows, this table shows the details of the cost of the bond. For an average home of $482,000, the cost would begin at 57 cents per thousand and then hold steady at $800 for the life of the loan, $800 annually for the life of the loan. The board discussed the option of level debt or level principal and voted to support level debt at this time. Level debt will impact today's taxpayers at the same rate as taxpayers who reside in the town at the end of the loan. The cost is slightly less per taxpayer using this model, though the overall impact to the town is slightly higher. This is a graphic representation of the information that was on the last page. And finally, I'd like to read the article. Article 12. Just going to make it a little bit bigger on my screen. Articles 12. "To see if the district will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $54,250,179 gross budget to finance the major addition, reconstruction, and renovation project for the Clark Wilkins Elementary School located at 14 Foundry Street, Amherst, New Hampshire, and 80 Boston Post Road, Amherst, New Hampshire, and to authorize the issuance of not more than $54,250,179 of bonds or notes under and in compliance with the Municipal Finance Act RSA 31-1, as amended. "To authorize the school board to apply for, obtain, and accept federal, state, or other aid, if any, which may be available for said project, and to comply with all laws applicable to said project. "To authorize the school board to issue, negotiate, sell, and deliver said bonds and notes, and to determine the rate of interest thereon and the maturity and other terms thereof. "And to authorize the school board to take any action and to pass any other vote relative thereto, and further to raise and appropriate an additional sum of $1,356,255 for the first year's interest payment on the bond. Three-fifths ballot vote required." And this brings us to our next, voting day is March 14th. So I am going to take my seat and allow Tom to take back over.
Thank you very much, Victoria. So we will open it up for questions. We have some folks that are in attendance in person tonight here at the theater at South Heagan High School. By the way, we will do this again tomorrow night, but there will be less focus on facilities. And tomorrow night, we'll focus on the other articles that will go on the warrants or potentially go on the warrant in March, including the budget, the default budget, our two contracts with the teachers and support staff, and then our capital reserve fund as well. So we'll talk more about those tomorrow night. Tonight, we're just limiting questions to the bond. In the presentation Victoria just went over. So with that, I will open it up to folks that want to come to the microphone to ask questions in-house first. Once we get through these questions, we'll open it up for our online audience, online speakers. Again, if you want to speak, raise your hand virtually, enter your full name and the avatar. I see our guests have done that so far. When it comes time to speak, please turn on your camera and then state your name and full name and resident, town of residence. And then you'll have a couple of minutes to ask your questions and interact and get any information that you need that might help with the situation tonight. So I will turn it over to the microphone, our first speaker at the mic tonight.
Hi, yes, Jeannie Lute, Three Schools Street in Amherst. There are a couple of things that I just want to make sure get addressed so that the public understands them. And I don't have the answer, so I'm hoping you all do. If you could talk a little bit about why you chose to build new versus renovating Clark and Wilkins, especially in terms of the cost estimates and how close they were. I just want to make sure that's, that point is brought forth. And then the other thing is, you didn't mention the new gym space that will be in the new elementary school, which will benefit our community. We seem to always have gym space in demand and never enough of it. And this will alleviate some of that pressure. So I just wanted to make sure that was also included in the conversation.
Thank you, Jeannie. To answer your second question first, or to point out your second question, we did not, as Victoria mentioned, went through and mentioned the gym space. But not only would it alleviate some of the scheduling conflicts we have between lunch and the multipurpose room that is now acting as a gymnasium as well, it will also allow us to open up the building at night for larger and more events as well. So basketball leagues, other recreational pursuits that can be done in that building, and certainly bigger spaces and more spaces to be able to open it up for the community after school hours as well. So having a true gymnasium, a full gymnasium, in addition to that multipurpose room slash theater, will certainly benefit the community more than just the kids as well. So as regards to your first question, I will let Victoria answer that. And if we need further assistance, we can provide some.
No, I appreciate you mentioning that, Jeannie. It's definitely something that we've shown in other presentations and something that we'll make sure we include at the deliberative.
Further questions in-house tonight? While we have our next speaker coming up over by the door on the table, there are draft copies of the warrant and then the public hearing notice at the door tonight as well. So if you need to grab those or want to review those on your way in or on your way out, those are by the door as needed as well. And you can go, Will.
Okay, Will Lute, Three Schools Street. Yeah, I couldn't have Jeannie get up here and say something without me saying a couple of things. But it's short, and I know you're working hard on it, getting state funding. It would be really It would be really nice. I guess there's no way of understanding when and if there will be school funding, because I think that would be a major plus for the public if they knew that we were getting X amount of dollars of state funding to cover the cost of this. And I know it's almost a hard or maybe right now an impossible task, but I think that would be a good thing.
Yeah, we have done the due diligence on this. Ms. Facy, would you like to provide any of the insight in terms of the specific timeline? Or Mr. Chamberlain?
So it's, they're just starting, the state is just starting their budget process now, right? We had, we've just had a new legislature, and they're beginning learning the priorities of the governor and all the both houses. So they'd like to have the budget done by July 1. New Hampshire has not been great at meeting that timeline recently. So the bond sale, as Victoria talked about, would be obviously June 19th, and the vote is March 14th, right? Sorry, the application. We have to decide everything by the 19th.
By the 19th.
And then, of course, the vote is the 14th. So you are correct. There is really no, there was no expectation that the state will have their budget done, which includes the amount for building aid in time for either of those two deadlines. But the Amherst Board has set to meet with our legislative folks and have a session to talk about advocacy. There are a couple of bills right now that are, it's called LSRs, Legislative Service Requests, and one of it would add $100 million more to the amount of building aid in the next biennial budget. And the board has, wanting to give up their time to advocate with our legislative representatives for the inclusion or passing of $100 million more in the building aid. They're doing everything we can to get it, but it probably won't be done until, I suspect if it's a good year, it's July 1, but it might be after.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, just one or two other little things. Since we're really putting AMS on hold, you know, sort of on hold. Are there any portables there now at AMS? And is there any envisioned with, you know, six, seven, and eight moving to AMS only? And Mont Vernon, you know, they're going to be split, right? Mont Vernon, they're fifth graders. Is that when they come to, to the school?
Seventh grade.
Pardon?
Seventh grade only.
Oh, seventh grade. Okay, got it. Okay.
So anything with There's no discussion on portables at AMS yet. If we, if this passes and we're able to move fifth graders out of that building, there will be no need for it, because we would have, we'd be opening up a handful of classrooms. And then over time, we would use our capital reserve fund and work on projects at AMS separately. We do have a project, as Victoria, I believe, mentioned, that we're working on for this year to help make this building watertight. One of our first steps in sort of a long-term renovation of AMS to make it watertight this year with roof and unit ventilators. That will eat up a large portion of our CRF, because these projects aren't cheap. So I think we're looking at upwards of a million and a half dollars, give or take, for that project. So it highlights the needs that we have over there, just to make the building watertight partway, because I don't believe it goes the full way to hit every single roof and unit ventilator as well. So it's part of a long-term plan that we have for that school.
Okay. And the final question is, remember last year, one of the big issues was, you know, putting, do we put solar panels in the budget or not? Have a separate budget line item. I take it we're not adding solar into this current plan. Is that true?
Correct. The building is going to be built to house potential solar panels down the road, but we are also back in our October or November meeting. I can't remember which one off the top of my head. The board did vote to postpone this solar project for another year, because we're looking at potential other projects in town. The idea of a solar farm potentially over on the beach, Barch Park property has been mentioned and floated to folks in the administration. So that's a project that we're looking at, but it's going to be more of a long-term focus to see if something like that is possible, where you don't have to put it on one of your buildings, but instead can house it on some of the properties that the school district owns in town.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I like your slides, too. Your slides are very easy to read. I don't know if that's something new here at South Heagan, but it was good to see the
Your eyes are just getting younger, Will. That's all it is. Anybody else in person would like to speak tonight? We will open it up for our online guests in a few minutes. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, guys. My name's Greg Fritz, resident of Amherst. Just wanted to comment. I also think they're very good slides. The level principal option, I think, would be preferred for a lot of people because of the total cost of ownership of that debt, and I'd hear thinking about shorter terms as well. That would be my favorite. If we can, if we can do something like that, depending on the bond rates that go up. And maybe if the bond rates go down by enough, and it's still 100 per payment, maybe you think about doing the 25-year as a way to kind of keep the interest low, because for 6%, you know, or 30 years, you're paying more to bankers than you are to construction companies. So it's not, you know, my favorite way of doing it. But it's the way financing works. I heard you guys talk a little about the, or talk a little about the cost of the alternative of building addition. And I know, Victoria, we're in the middle of an email conversation about that. It's not, last you mentioned, the way I would look at this project from a value perspective is, is the cost known well? I now think that this is a well-created, quote, well-created budget for this project. And my other question is, it, what's the next best option? What's the opportunity cost of building this school? And of course, there's educational considerations. You mentioned a lot of those, but just from the financial side, I still don't understand what the total cost would be of the alternative plan that was, the top-line number was like the same total cost. It was an addition. Replace all the capitals replaced, replace the boiler, replace the HPC, and have an addition. Allegedly, that has been costed by Banwell and DW, and those numbers were almost the same as this item. It's just, I need to, I would love to see those. I'm looking forward to still working with you on that this week. But that's, I think, a question people have is, it doesn't seem to make sense that a small addition with the new capital items could possibly be the similar cost as a whole new school with new capital items. So if that all makes sense, you know, I think it's probably should go forward, but absent of that, I think it's going to be a real hard thing to judge, because we should always think about what is the opportunity cost of these decisions? Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Shannon Gascoigne, 5 Parker Farm Lane. I just wanted to make a little note on, to Mr. Lute's point on Amherst Middle School. And to those folks in the community, I am on the Amherst School District Building and Grounds Committee, which is a subcommittee of JFAK. Amherst Middle School is not on hold. That building has still, has great need there. And the recommendations, which Tom mentioned that the board is moving forward, are to utilize capital reserve funds to begin working on the needs at that school bit by bit. When a new elementary school or K to 5 is built, that will go a long way at the middle school for sort of releasing the pressure valve on their space constraints. They have more going on there, however, than just their space constraints. What will also happen with the building of a new elementary school is our capital reserve funding right now, the money that we're saving away each year to work on these items at our schools, is currently being split up among Clark, Wilkins, and AMS. When a new elementary school is constructed, the bond will cover that. In those first years, we will be able to direct all of our capital reserve savings funds to the needs of Amherst Middle School, which is really important, because we will still have great needs there that we are planning for and socking away money for. So I wanted to make certain that was highlighted and noted. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannon, and thank you for all your time on not only the Amherst Building and Grounds Committee this year, but the last four or five years, chairing our JFAK committee for the majority of that time. So without your assistance, certainly this project is not where it is today, and just as you as a volunteer, unelected to serve in that position. Anybody else in person before we open it up for online? Okay, so we have a couple of online guests. If you would like to speak, please follow the directions. Raise your hand, enter your name, turn on your camera, say your name, and then you'll have time to ask your questions as needed. It's always the suspense of the moment at this part. I'm excited to see what happens. All right, so seeing no questions from our online guests, are there any other folks that have further questions in the building tonight? Any further concerns? Going once? Going twice? And three times we are sold. So with that, I believe that we have reached the end of our meeting for tonight. There's no reason to belabor the point any further. So we will have more information on the rest of our items that'll be on the warrant tomorrow night during our public hearing, which gets started at 7:00 PM in this same building at the, at South Heagan High School that will follow the South Heagan High School Public Hearing, which begins at 5:00 PM. Tomorrow, we'll review the budget, the default budget, I should say, proposed and default budgets, our new contracts that were, that we've agreed to with the support staff and the teachers in the district, and then information on our capital reserve funding for this year as well, the contribution to that fund, which, as we've talked about tonight, will go towards supporting projects at the middle school if the, the project here tonight that we've discussed passes. We will have more on this one tomorrow night, just not as much, and it's not as in-depth. But certainly at deliberative, we will cover everything in full depth when we get to that meeting in February. So for tonight, I want to thank everybody for coming. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. We will adjourn the meeting tonight at 6:39. And we will join you again on Tuesday for the public hearing.